It's that... Well, for sure. You gotta fix anything there. What I got out of that was they got off the administration pay over here. Especially what they said. A hundred thousand dollars and all this out.
Yeah, I'm saying far. Yeah, yeah.
Swamp by the big bad. You remember how I get that down to the two lane? Yeah, yeah. In from the French. See, that came through. Right. We're good at ours without them today. Fifteen years. Now we're acting like oh, oh, oh. Even though it's not really. Yeah, sometimes you need to be reminded. None of the colors are being charged for you.
A lot of trucks, you know, a lot of...
They could, they could have come back and said, "We don't..."
Again, again, kind of... Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. They were talking about this whole... They pulled it out pretty quick when it was just going on. I had a lot of you sort of like that. Well, they think so. Right. It went up hard. Andrew said, "For everyone to pull the F six meters." You took me out there and said, "Well, if I can get on, I can go to the...
Really, apparently. Really, no. I'll see you.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I was just like, "Oh." Why did that? I'm the landlord, I'm friends with him. You gonna bug y'all? You gonna bug y'all?
Major Paris, one of them, he got a good seat recently. Remember that?
Yep.
We were downstairs.
No, we didn't.
There were a bunch of people.
Yeah.
Yeah. They, they, they came and they all went on tour and shut in the corner. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the only time I've ever been to Seattle. My relatives from Texas were calling about my ninety-nine year old aunt. And my relatives were still wanting to find this. Oh, okay. To the fire station. Then the three hundred. She had a part two box supply. And she was on the walk. And the service and all. So four minutes and five, she was asleep at the airport. And the fire station was involved with that. And the carrier, you're going very, very... Tom, so the big guy saw us, he wanted to know if we'd direct.
If it shouts. But not much, it should be. Good thing. Shout.
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
You had, you had...
I want to, yeah, look a lot of them. If they choose three miles.
At one point in time, it was like three or four hundred. It's like...
Think you're having a share of trouble.
Yep.
Maybe I'll sell that for more.
We were at a pile.
Shout, shout.
There you go.
That's right, that's right. You know, that's kind of hard now.
That's what I think. Exactly.
You know, this one.
Too far, yeah, exactly. You want, you serve a little better than yours. What a wind.
They have...
We have to give the reading to Sean. And that's a... But I was telling you, you were good for it. With my... He made me, he made me, probably should put it all together. But he has a thing that...
I remember that.
I don't know. You don't want to do that.
I think we have people... That there's a chance. Because... There's something happening.
Just keep it up.
You know, the tax, or the accessory, he's...
Oh, we can just say that I'm...
If you can't, if you can't hold to somebody, hold yourself. I'm sure he has some complaints.
They won't be... They don't want to try to back them.
But then just...
See, they go, "Well, listen, boy." "Now, take some, we get..." "Set it to do." People are ready for the... Yeah, I'm glad you said that. Yeah, yeah. I don't think they have a big...
Yeah, I was thinking that too.
I was like, "You say..."
I know, that's what...
That's true. I mean, it's an argument. Right, exactly. I put a clock in the call.
They must have opened it. They voted and then they didn't turn out either way.
What, no, he's...
And then they... He's having a...
I think he's... He's really helping out. Exactly.
We're trying to show the light.
I mean, it's... I'm not... I haven't done that.
I just get tired of it. And money... Then you have to start over.
That was...
How long?
Like we're talking about... Sorry, right? You got to do it.
Yeah, and then you know where it's at.
So that was... So you understand?
But, yeah, but you were...
Let's get you guys for it. If I'm bad, I'm not looking.
That's what I thought. No, that's good. Yeah, I know what you're saying.
And then you get that most... They actually... So, I mean...
Really wrong. And of course...
Forward, like, essentially.
Easy, that's what I'm saying.
We got time, man.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have let them want to leave three years ago. Why do you want to have a last name? Get them, get them. Or would it make you forget? They're great. I can't... You're not my... But I don't know. But I don't care at all. I really don't. My health. My health. Options.
Because I can remember going the hallway. It was a good place to vote and you know my home. It's the, it's the bird office, not our deal. It's not really that...
I can pass my wife out. I'm first of the man. Which case I would... I'm the body.
I don't want to show.
I, I think I could probably do no good.
Especially going to the...
There's a... Yes. Shall we? Wait one minute.
Whatever, there's a... Got it.
You got... What to do? I... I report here.
I get things that, you know, it's not a sort of deal.
I know.
There's not a link, link in the bottom.
It's staying with...
That's what everyone wants to know. Like, people who don't know what you're...
They're talking, yeah, yeah, that's true. Me. So they just...
I think I... I thought it was my head.
That's a John. It's like, it's such... You'll be like, unless you guys question it.
Yeah.
Oh, God. All, all that good. Set there here. All that good. I know I was getting some...
Second beer.
Thank you. That would like...
What is that?
More.
I don't think this is...
That's hard to do.
I want to... So you hit...
My life's... He don't keep all over.
That, that makes it... The restaurant, they were there the whole time. Always...
Whenever I go there.
Was that what it was?
Just to keep sure. You're about to let two boys... Third, it's the end.
Not yet. We go to the bar and it wasn't... And not... There's no... And I'm using aerial phones. Sean was driving, like, exactly. It's like, half the last year. It's, there's no magic going on here, there's prayer.
They were still having a war. They were looking at... I don't know.
Yes.
If that's right, if that's right. Have we...
But you have to have it in the service. Probably not. I just think it's insurance policy.
It's important as that. I mean, this is the final discussion. Final approval. Well, she called... It was... I thought, I mean, now you want to leave.
Oh, I was looking at that.
Like it more... Here directly, all people just take the... That's not... That's what I'm doing. I always want to happen.
In a sense, it's a proper... I think you know, if you don't...
You make... I say you give it.
She has one side, she has one side.
I can't... I suspect...
Well, that was my first... I don't...
It's provident, Jerry, it's provident.
Tell me, guess what? This is...
Oh, she's...
Another...
Yes. She better drive that.
Well, I can't... Wouldn't watch... I would, I would, I would.
I want to say a little... I watched the last part. I watched the last hour.
Lost most of our crowd.
Yeah.
Pour them out. I know, I was trying.
All right, yeah.
Okay. Call our meeting back to order. Consider matters discussed in executive session regarding pending litigation in title City of Shawnee versus Hub at all pursuant to twenty-five O S P four. And we don't have really any action. Okay? So we can move on to the next agenda item. Commissioners' comments?
I would just ask that we all continue to remember Jason Miles' family. It was a wonderful service the other day and I think we need to keep them in our thoughts and prayers.
I had a handout here that I was requested by the Shawnee Rescue Mission to make an announcement and circulate this flyer about their Memorial Day Weekend Bash at Woodland Park from one o'clock to three P M. Free hot dogs, hamburgers for the community, prize giveaways, tuna bicycles, and they have an inflatable slide for the kids and a live band. And I committed to go, so why don't the rest of you come?
Sounds like some good wholesome fun.
Yeah.
Free food.
I get a hamburger or a hot dog.
Yeah.
Everybody's invited, of course.
Retain, it sounds like fun.
The last couple of events at Woodland Park have been well attended, let's put it that way. So this, I assume this one will be too.
Good. Okay, Margaret, nothing?
Polycarts, um, polycart survey have been, have been sent out and they come, came by the other day and picked up the polycarts, load them on a truck and haul them off. So we're back to having trash bags back on the curves. In some areas, but anyway, just reminder, reminder for everyone to, to send the pollen area to send in your surveys that came with the stamp envelope that no cost to you. Just fill it out, fill out the survey, send it back in. Need to give me a call, my number's two seven three nine nine two six. I've heard from quite a few people and I'd hear from the rest of you. But anyway, if you will fill that out and the staff here at the city hall will take those and we will take a look at them.
Guess that's going to be on our agenda next time?
June fourth.
June fourth, okay.
Good, good. We have Shawnee High School graduation tomorrow night. My oldest daughter's going to graduate, so beware. They'll be out in the streets somewhere. Hopefully at project graduation till three o'clock in the morning, getting their TVs and things that they have drawings for. It's on channel thirty? Oh, okay. Seven o'clock. Okay. So, it's great. We have a pretty good contingency going to the Aerospace Summit, Oklahoma Aerospace Summit tomorrow at the Cox Business Center. Shawnee Economic Development Foundation members and Airport Authority members will be there for the next two days. So we're going to try to drag some business down here from the aerospace people. And next week we have the Sauber D Symposium.
Yes, thirty to thirty first.
Thirty to thirty first, week after, week after.
Yeah, whatever.
Whatever. I don't know, I can't keep up. Too many things going on.
Yeah, it's next Wednesday, Thursday.
Right. Also, June, what is that community night?
For...
Yeah, June the sixth, is that a Wednesday? Is that the Wednesday?
Yeah.
We have the Community Night down at Durant at the lake. That would be nice if we had commissioners in attendance. I know that I'm planning on going and I know Jim's going, are you going?
I'd go.
Shawnee Economic Development Foundation members again, and we've invited the chamber to go down and represent Shawnee to about thirty site locators. It's a big deal for, of course, southeastern Oklahoma. And maybe we have an opportunity to bring some of those guys to Shawnee at some time, but we'll hopefully have a notice go out in the mailboxes to have more information on that. It's a Wednesday night.
This is at Durant.
It's at the lake, it's in, it was used to be at the lodge, it's a lodge there. It's a, what's the name of that? Oakwood Hotel and across the bridge from, it's exonerated. So, and they have, it's, and actually that's, that's going to be at Carlotta's. Carlotta's Cantina, which is, they'll have cook states and it's really, really a nice reception. So any of you just went down for the evening, it's really a nice, nice deal.
They're still looking at volunteers that want to get up at three thirty in the morning and go out fishing.
Go out striper fishing.
I'm working the golf tournament, I'm not working the fishing one.
I'm thinking plan a golf tournament. Maybe the chief needs to go. Provide security. Right. All right. Okay, anything else?
Uh, we have been talking about definition on easements and who easements belong to, how you maintain them, who maintains them, who can build on them. And I'd like to continue with that and I don't know when staff can bring that to us. Just so clarification for us. And the other thing is public storm sewers versus just easements for drainage. And what the distinction is and whose responsibility it is to clean them out. And, you know, we're starting to get into that. The rains have really highlighted...
Stormwater.
Oh, yes.
Regulations.
And I guess there are a few that are truly public and if they, if they belong to the City of Shawnee, I think we need to have a plan to get them cleaned out. And so I want to look at that and if they're not the responsibility of the City of Shawnee, then we need to let the residents know that behind their house or next to their house or whatever is, is an easement that they need to keep clean. So we need to have some distinction on that and some understanding so we all know. So I'd like staff to bring that back to us in the near future, but I don't expect it probably in the next thirty days.
I don't have a list of all the sports heroes we have. I, I know we have many from all the different sports. We have a couple of local baseball teams that took state, Bethel and Dale that I know of. And we have a lot of athletes in Shawnee and...
Archery.
Archery, track, um, what else? Tennis. We have a lot of, a lot of people here that we don't have, we don't have a good list of, we should have brought, that was your job. All right, write that down. We need to do that next time. Okay, if there's nothing else, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Young. Second by Commissioner Schran. Call roll, please.
Aye.
Schran.
Aye.
O'Neal.
Aye.
Neal.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Open up the meeting for the Shawnee Municipal Authority, May twenty first, two thousand and seven. We have a forum, consider approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson. Second by Commissioner O'Neal, call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Administrative reports? New business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner O'Neal, second by Commissioner Schran, call roll, please.
O'Neal.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Open up the meeting for the Shawnee Airport Authority, May twenty first, two thousand and seven. We have a forum, consider approval of consent agenda. Motion by Commissioner Schran.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young, call roll, please.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Administrative reports?
None.
New business?
None.
Motion adjourned.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner... Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Stran.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young. Call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. We are adjourned.